And he's going to open live to everybody, go.
Good evening.
Recording in progress.
Okay, Jeff, you can start the meeting. We're still waiting for one more person to have a quorum though, but go ahead.
Okay, I call the Village of Buchanan meeting to order at 7:30 and today is June 17, 2021. Would you all please join me in the pledge allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republican public. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Hello, George.
Evening, George.
Hey, Brian.
Do we know when Jen is expected to join?
I'm unsure. I think she said she was gonna be late. Can we proceed with the, uh, the public hearing on the, uh, pool?
No, we don't have a quorum, so you don't even technically have a meeting.
Okay.
We're just kind of being respectful and letting Jennifer, uh, have a few minutes to show up, I guess. If you don't have a quorum, we end the meeting.
Okay. Understood.
Marcus, you don't happen to have her, uh, contact info, do you?
No, I do not. Um, does anybody have her cell phone number? Or do we get text to get an idea?
I'll take a look. I may have it. Baller?
Uh, why don't you try texting her first, see if she has an idea when she, if she can make it or not.
Texting her right now.
Uh, does anybody know if Tracy was gonna be late or not attend at all?
No, she's at a graduation, I believe, so she will not be, uh,
Okay.
I was just notified by Jennifer. She said 8:00 PM. It's a little late, half hour, 20 minutes.
That's up to you, Chairman.
Do you think we should wait?
Who do we have here? We have the applicant and we have...
Our engineer, probably.
We got Mr. Coleman.
Coleman?
Hey, everyone. We'd like to be heard this evening.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, you want to just hold quietly until she appears?
Uh, correct, yes, we should hold so that way they can be heard and we can have a secure.
Peter, would you text her and let her know that we're waiting for her to show up for the meeting, that we'll wait till she show up? Is that what she knows?
Okay. She responded okay.
Would we want to use this time to have a little bit of an informal discussion about some of the issues? Or we'll leave it up to you?
I, I don't think you could have any kind of discussion as a public hearing. I think you have to wait for the meeting to be opened, probably.
Okay.
Stefan, unless you disagree, Stefan, it's up to you.
No, 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 you're correct, because technically we're not having an open meeting right now, because we don't have a quorum. So we're just gonna sit quietly and wait for our other board members.
Chairman, can you make an announcement that we're just waiting for a board member, because people are asking what's going on?
Yes, please be advised, we're waiting for one more board mi- members, so we continue the meeting for the public hearing.
There we go, perfect.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, quick administration. Point of order, approval of the minutes, Rosemary has sent them out. Is there any omissions or any additions to the minutes that need to be done by the board members? All right, may I have a motion to accept the minutes as read?
I'm okay.
Eileen?
The minutes are accepted.
And Jennifer, second?
Second.
Thank you all. Okay, I'd like to open up the hearing for the pool and deck project at 193 Catherine Street. George, you sent out the the information on what has to be done, correct?
Yes, I circulated a memo to the applicant and, I'm sorry, the applicant's engineer and the board.
Okay. Brian, Peter, do you have any questions of what George sent out before we start the public hearing?
No, no, we're satisfied with what he has chosen to write.
Okay, Mr. Coleman, are you prepared to present?
Yes, could I share my screen? Everyone see, see that?
Yes.
Yeah. Draw it was submitted, and Brian and Stephanie McNellis are here, the owners. We're following up from the planning board hearing a few weeks ago. Just wanted to clarify that the house was built in 2015 and had an approved site plan at that time. And that the McNellises bought the property then, as is, in 2017. The proposed pool installation does not require any variances and is compliant with the zoning. Obviously, we're trying to get this sorted out as quickly as possible. After the last hearing, this was what we presented last time. We, this drawing, we've moved the pool deck back six feet, moving it away from the property line here. That eases the slope of this. We're just keeping a, you know, minimal walkway on this side. You can see the, how far us further back it steps. And then this afternoon, we received comments from Han Engineering, as was noted. And just wanted to say that this was not the permit application that we fully intend to submit an engineered permit. And that we plan to engage Cronin Engineering, who did the approved site plan in 2015 and was used as a background for some of my drawings because it had it had topographical information and more detail than the survey, which does exist of the, of the property as, as built. And so basically, we'll comply with all of the comments in Han Engineering's proposal and engage the engineers to do that. I did want to show, though, the existing conditions on the site, which are documented. There was some question about retaining wall here. You'll also see, actually, this is the property line. This is the neighbor's driveway, which is encroaching here. 2.4 feet and 3.2 feet. And one thing I just wanted to surface tonight. You know, ideally, we want to move this forward as quickly as we can and plan to be compliant. One thing I did want to raise, though, is in the letter from Han Engineering, they mention requirement for screening and a landscaping plan. And I want to be very clear about that. I've reviewed the zoning. And I don't find in the zoning any requirement for screening for a residential pool. That it's clear if you're abiding a commercial property or for parking, there are screening requirements, that the zoning requires a four-foot, you know, a four-foot barrier. None of that we're questioning. And, you know, the screening we're proposing has been, you know, a little bit diagrammatic because it's not a requirement. It's really something the McNellises are doing because they want, you know, a beautifully landscaped backyard. They want privacy for themselves and for their neighbors. And so it's, it's really a win-win, and it was discussed at the last hearing. But I want to be very clear about what the standard is that's required, you know, in terms of heights of trees, numbers of numbers of plantings. And then we can, then we can move forward. So that's really, that's my presentation. Happy to take questions or comments.
Brian or Peter, did you have anything towards that comment that he just made about the, the privacy screening? You're muted still.
Brian, you're muted. You're talking, nobody can hear you.
All right, all right, Matt, that. No, my only comment is that I did get a letter from a neighbor, an email. I'm not sure if it was circulated to the rest of the board. Has anyone else seen the most recent letter from the neighbor?
No, I have not.
Okay. He said he was going to have some people in attendance. I don't know if that's from the public. Eventually, I guess we'll get to the public, fortunately, to have them be able to speak. But as far as a requirement for screening, I have not found it in the code, but that would be a normal practice.
Okay. Marcus, can we open this up to the public questions?
Yes, we can. Mr. Coleman, if you can stop sharing your screen for a second.
Sure.
And then I can open up. I know. So if anybody wants to speak up now, I know I think Mr. Burke is on there. I'm going to allow him to talk right now. Yes.
Excuse me, did we open the public, did we make a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, you're absolutely correct. That was not done yet.
I have a motion to open up to public hearing.
No moves.
Eileen, second by Jennifer?
Second.
So move.
Okay, so I'm going to open up to Mr. Burke. Mr. Burke, you can unmute yourself and you can speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening. So my question, and actually, I really didn't have many until Mr. Coleman spoke. Zoning does not require height requirements, I guess, for plantings? I'm confused because my understanding is the mafia block wall is not permitted. But we're allowing them to have that regardless. So how, how would you apply existing zoning to something that's not permitted? Right on.
Peter? Brian?
I would just say that I understand there was, you know, this got off of the rails a little bit, that mafia block was installed. You know, it wasn't installed maliciously. They thought that it was a compliant solution. So what we're proposing has to be fully reviewed, as you'll see the letter from Han Engineering. So that means that our proposal has to meet the zoning, it has to meet the building code requirements. And we're engaging professionals to do that. So the proposal that we're submitting is to correct that exposed mafia block, which would be buried and is compliant with the zoning and building code, as I understand it.
Yeah, to be honest, Mr. Coleman, I was not expecting an answer from you. I'd like the building inspectors and the planning board to address, I mean, you're saying, based on zoning in the village of Buchanan, you don't have to plant anything to cover. And Mr. Cook, Peter Cook, Brian Cook, Peter, I'm sorry. Brian Cook, you know, said it's obligatory or whatever the case may be. You know, on Mr. Coleman's diagrams, he said he was planting shrubs or whatever plantings to cover from what looks like to me a good eight feet of space. And now I'm hearing that that's not in the zoning. So I'd like that addressed.
Well, Mr. Burke, last time we spoke at the last meeting, we talked about giving privacy to the owners of the property and also privacy so that you're not looking at them so that we, we decided that they were going to put up either fencing or shrubbery to cover that. And that's where that was addressed by Peter and Brian Cook, our, our building inspectors.
Yeah, right, but Mr. Coleman just contradicted that.
Okay, so what, what is your, what is your concern? There is going to be privacy screening, so that way you're not looking at them and they're not looking at you.
I, I sent an email to everyone, I think it was yesterday. Based on Mr. Coleman's drawings, anything planted on that property around that pool would have to be at least eight feet in height to cover, right? There are four-foot railing plus what they're planting on their new grading.
May I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
So the issue on the last meeting was the positioning of our deck, that it was too close to his property. And so in the time that we've been allotted, we've made tremendous concessions with completely changing our plans, moving the deck to the opposite side of our regard to mitigate this. That was the issue. So we've completely mitigated that issue now. So I just want to make sure that that is very clear.
And we're still putting up the privacy on that side.
So, hold on. So on the plans we discussed to have a solid fence on that side, are we still going with the solid fence?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Burke, there's going to be a solid fence plus shrubberies growing up in front of that fence. So, so there is not going to be any issues with you seeing them or them seeing you.
Okay, so, so the railing on the deck is four feet. The shrubbery, as I, when you guys have a chance and would like to look at my email, or Mr. Coleman can opine on this, would need to be eight to 10 feet in height to cover anything there, based on the grading of the property. Right? Insofar as mitigation for this, if a permit was filed at the beginning and plans were reviewed and the cheapest, you know, retaining wall you could possibly put in wasn't put in, this wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, so noted. So Brian and Peter, what is the height of the fence that is authorized on the pool?
Fence on the pool, for safety purposes and a barrier, has to be 48 inches.
48 inches.
Could we go higher?
I guess you can, yes.
Without a variance and without a meeting, would you allow us to go higher on that side?
The maximum that you could go up without a variance would be six feet.
I would gladly go up six feet on that side.
Okay, and then there would no longer be a privacy issue because I don't believe you're taller than six feet.
I'm 5'10", and I'm the tallest guy in the family.
Yeah, and then the shrubs would not even be needed at that point.
I love it. That's a wonderful solution. Thank you so much. Yes, we'll gladly add that to our plans.
Okay. So, Mr. Burke, is there any other concern with the screening portion of this fence going there now?
Yes, yes, there is. This has to be the most ridiculous conversation I've ever heard. Do you know why?
Why?
I used to look at trees. Now, when I look at a concrete wall, and you're telling me they're going to build a six-foot fence that's 16 feet above my property, and I'll be staring at that.
Well, the six, the fencing around the pool is, is New York State law for safety.
I'm familiar with that.
Whether, would you, would I please finish, please? So whether it's a four-foot fence or a six-foot fence, there's privacy there. I understand you want to look at trees, but it's not your property. If they want to plant trees, they can plant more trees there. So what, what is the concerns to the, the ordinance of the village that you have concern with this project?
So, once they put that deck on top of the mafia block or wherever they're planning, that's going to be in excess of six foot.
Brian or Peter?
Since, since he's below them and looking up, even with the four-foot fence, what are, what are we going to see? He's not looking over their fence, he's on He, he's not looking over their fence, he's under all of it. So I'm confused. If the fence is blocking that view even at four feet, what is he seeing? What's going to be seen?
Yes.
You're not on the same plane. You're much lower, looking up, as you're saying, the footage you're saying it is. I don't believe it, I don't believe it's that much, but...
And the concrete block wall will be completely under soil.
It's gone.
You will not see it any longer.
What they submitted and seemed to go through at the last meeting, that that was, that was an attractive look for the property.
Yes.
So, so far as an engineer standpoint and the building inspector, the four-foot or, or six-foot fence is within standards and there should be no issue, correct?
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
All right.
My next question, drainage.
George, you want to go over what they had in plans for the drainage there? In the last plans, or Brian or Peter?
Well, I actually can go over it. We, we looked at the drainage and we presented our comments to Mr. Coleman and he said he's going to engage in Mr., Mr. Cronin. And they're going to also review it and have something probably for the next meeting to review. So, right now, it's still under review, to answer your question.
There will be drainage and it will be...
And there, yeah, there is, there is drainage on site and it's going to address the additional impervious area.
Yes.
So there would be additional protection for any overrunage of, of the water on the property?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Burke, is there any other question?
Yeah, yeah, no, that was the purpose of the email I sent. That's as Mr. Palmer just addressed. How deep do you have to bury concrete for it to be pervious?
There's no standard for that.
So if I had concrete on my property and I threw a foot of soil over it, it'd be considered pervious?
It's a foot of soil, drainage. You have drainage at that point, absorption.
Oh, okay.
The concrete, the concrete is there for a barrier to hold up the, the rest of the soil so there's no erosion. And then also the soil on top with the plants and the mulch or whatever they put down should, should alleviate any runoff so that it goes properly into the new drainage.
New drainage.
So, so to add to that, Mr. Burke, it's analogous to having a boulder or a rock or something else under the soil. So, and, and it's actually also on a case-by-case basis. In this case, the block is a linear wall, two feet wide, and there's gravel behind it. There's soil in front of it, soil behind it and soil on top of it. So it's, it's not just a, a simple, straightforward answer. So it's case-by-case based, and this is a particular case.
Yeah, no, my, my question more was to the concrete poured around the pool.
Okay, I thought we were talking about the, the blocks that were being buried. So now we're, now we're up to the concrete, the concrete around the pool.
And if you're saying soil on top of it makes it fine, and that's understandable, I, I get that.
So I don't, I don't think they have a condition where they have soil on top of concrete around the pool, other than the footings, I mean...
Footings.
By believing in the last call, they even said the instructions for installing the pool, they had to pour concrete around. That was part of the...
No, no, because the pool is on ledge, solid ledge. There's one, one or two areas that needed footings installed. And that, that's not going to be a, a big area that would affect the drainage.
And they've got the coverage.
Correct.
Coverage.
Yeah.
Is there any other question, Mr. Burke?
Yes, all this will be inspected by the village?
Yes, Mr. Burke.
Between the engineers and the building inspectors, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Marcus, is there any other questions from the community?
On this, one other person, but his hand is not raised, so I don't think we have any, anybody else with any questions.
Does any of the board members have any questions?
No, I had a question about the drainage also. It's answered.
All right, so Brian, Peter, what's the next step?
A motion from the planning board to determine that this is acceptable.
Actually...
Actually, actually, we're going to continue the public hearing, I believe.
Okay.
Because there's outstanding engineering and, and Mr. Cronin's going to jump in, am I correct, George?
That's correct.
So you would just, Mr. Chairman, you would just continue the public hearing till next month? You make a motion, you take a motion to continue it.
And I have a motion to continue the public hearing next month so that way we can get all the engineer controls in place?
Motion to continue.
Motion by Jennifer and second by Eileen. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll follow up with, with Peter and George. Thanks.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You too.
You have a good one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, you're not closing the meeting yet, are you?
No, no, I have two other, I have two other things on the docket here.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah, thank you. Has, has the, has the village received any information for the applicant of 3176 RV Post Road? As far as the steep slope analysis?
I have not received anything.
Okay, Stephanie, as far of, how, how long of a window can we give them if we send them a letter?
You know, I think the board would be well-served to send a letter. Okay, asking, asking them to please submit that missing information for which it's been open for months until, at the next meeting.
How many days do we have to give them?
You know, ask them, they have to have it submitted and presented by the next meeting for discussion.
So 30 days?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I can have a motion from the board to send them a letter requesting them to submit the steep slope analysis, but also be in mind that if they do not submit it, that they're, they're at risk and the project would be deemed abandoned.
Motion, motion to submit a letter.
Jennifer to send a letter and second by Eileen. So moved.
Rosemary? Hello?
She has her mic muted.
Okay, because generally, that, that letter would come, Rosemary would, would do that, draft that letter and then send it to you folks for approval. And I can certainly help her if she's listening. She can reach out. Yeah, okay, so you can reach out to me and I can help you draft that if you want.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, as far as the applicant from 226 Travis Avenue, have we received the new plans for that?
Sorry, say, which property?
226 Travis.
Travis.
Calabro.
Calabro, okay, I spoke with counsel, I don't know, earlier, late last week, and encouraged him to get that to us immediately. And he said that the engineer that had been working with Mr. Calabro decided not to work with him anymore, that he had retained, yeah, that he had retained another engineer and that they would have that to us shortly. So again, I would, I would probably suggest that a letter be sent.
Okay.
And I will follow up with the attorney as well. But perhaps a letter be sent saying we need that plan by the next meeting.
I, I think Peter has a little update too. Peter, want to update the board and Stephanie on your discussion?
Oh, sorry, okay.
Okay, I believe the second engineer, we, I had a meeting with a gentleman a week ago. I'm assuming that that would be the correct one that's replacing the original engineer. And we went over what he needed to do and he went over to physically inspect the wall himself and then he was going to get plans back to us. That's, that's where we left off, it was about, about a week ago.
And he is aware of the options that were provided and the option that his client chose?
He, he will be drawing, Brian Calabro, Calabro originally said to my, to myself that it was option two and the paperwork that I was receiving said option one. He had made a mistake, we resolved, we rectified that. So it is option one, it is the terrorist scenario.
Okay.
And the new engineer is aware of what needs to be done and to beautify the wall that's going to be exposed. He has to put some, some type of surface to cover it. You know, we don't want to see the cement.
But I think, I think you're right. I think a letter should be sent as well to, for the next meeting to get something in hand. It's, it has been going on for a long time. And all of a sudden, is when he starts, when he got the letter from Rosemary, is when he started making phone calls. So something has to be done with that one as well.
Okay, can I have a motion to send also Mr. Calabro a, a letter to get the supporting document for his project?
Motion.
Motion by Jennifer, second by Eileen. Does any of the board members have any other opening issues?
No.
Okay. Okay, I conclude the meeting. Thank you all.
You have to make a motion to, to...
Motion to, motion to close?
Yeah.
Thanks for waiting for me.
Thank you for coming, we needed you.
Sorry.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody. Good night, have a good night, bye-bye.